It's ten o'clock. We'll go ahead and call the special call meeting to order on August 29th, 2023. One, call to order and welcome guest. Two, call of Robert Estash Coram.
Chairman Clemens.
Here.
Commissioner Watson.
Here.
Commissioner Marchman.
Here.
Commissioner Duke.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
Three, new business. A, recognition Chris Keen retiring after 25 years of service with the Sales Tax Department.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion to approve out of A.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. B, recognition Sharon Townsend retiring after 27 years of service with a library.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion to approve. I'll be. I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. C, recognition Commissioner Duke for completing Alabama Local Government Training Institute.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve out of D.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Can we have a picture made?
Yeah, yeah.
Hold my picture maybe, yeah.
They can just take it off the website.
D, recognition Commissioner Freeman for completing Alabama Local Government Training Institute.
Mr. Johnson, go ahead. Mr. Johnson, approve out of D. I'm sorry.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. E, Resolution 2023-37, fiscal year 2024, FFAAIP pre-application for the Cullen Regional Airport. Go ahead, Ben.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This is the pre-apt process through the FY24 grant cycle. So, we will put all the potential grants out there and then we will let them tell us what they will be funded. So, we have to do a pre-apt for this process and that's what this is for.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve out of E.
Chairman, I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. Thank you so much, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you. Elf Resolution 2023-38, proven a warrant purchase agreement by Cullen County, Alabama, and Piper Sandler and Company.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is just the agreement for them to proceed with the process of getting the bonds put in place and ready to go to market. So, there's some numbers in there, but they're very high. They will not be that much. They would set a maximum interest rate and a maximum amount. I think it was 15. It will not be, yeah, 15.5, but it will not be that much. It'll be about, I think, 13.5 is what the total will be. So, those numbers are just put in there to be maximum and they round it way up just to be cautious. But this is just approving them to move forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve out of F.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. G, authorize the chairman to sign Alabama Department. You served this long time detention. Sustained his contract for the period of October 1st, 2023 through September 30th, 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion to approve out of G.
Second that.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. H, authorize the chairman to sign the in-laid communications systems agreement with the Combine Public Communications LLC and Cyber Path Services LLC for the Cullen County Detention Center.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion to approve out of H.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. I ratify commissioner agreement with legacy commissioner services for the Cullen County Sheriff's Office.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve out of M.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. J, consider the renewal of employee retiree health insurance enrollment agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Alabama. Renewal to be effective 10/1/2023. Cullen County maintains a self-insurance policy that is administered by Blue Cross.
Chairman and Commissioners, this is just the annual enrollment agreement with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Alabama. You all know we're self-insured and we just pay them to administer the claims. But I do want to bring to your attention, in your packet is this chart that we do every year. We keep it up with what the insurance claims are actually costing. And you can see that it looks like annualized, we're on par to be about a million and a half above where we were last year, which is about a 20% increase. So, I'd like to maybe put on a work session for next meeting in September to discuss employee contributions, that sort of thing. It's been several years since we did any changes to employee contributions. But this, you know, a million and a half increase in a year is just, you know, it's not going to be sustainable. So, we just, I think, probably need to talk about it next month. So, that's all of that for J.
Thank you, Judy.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion to approve out of J.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. K, consider changing stop-loss insurance carrier to Lloyd's of London to be effective on 10/1/23. 2% reduction in annual costs for fiscal year 2024. Authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
And this is just the stop-loss carrier. We're wanting to change our stop-loss carrier. It has been with Unity RE for several years. And what the stop-loss insurance does is because we are self-insured, we need to purchase a policy that covers us for catastrophic claims. Otherwise, you know, we could be, you know, we could be eligible for millions and millions of claims. And so, what this is, is just changing it to Lloyd's of London. They kind of partner with Blue Cross and Blue Shield. So, the administration will be a lot easier going with Lloyd's. Plus, it's a little small reduction. So, that's why we want to change over to Lloyd's effective October 1st.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve out of H. Or, okay, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. A, consider the renewal of life, short-term disability, long-term disability, and critical illness insurance for Mutual of Omaha. Renewal effective 1/1/24. No change in rates for fiscal year 2024. Authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Yes, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this is the renewal for the life, short-term, long-term disabilities and the critical illness that we have on all of our full-time employees. And there's no change in the rates for 2024.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve out of A.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. N, consider the renewal of air helmet service with Air Medical Care. Authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork. Covers all active Cullen County employees eligible for employee benefits. Renewal effective 10/1/23. No change in rates for fiscal year 2024.
And this is the Air Med Care that we put in place last October. This is the renewal for that. There's no change. We cover all of Cullen County employees that are eligible for employee benefits and it covers everybody in their household. So, we'd just like to renew this for the next fiscal year.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion to approve out of N.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. Thank you, Judy. N, consider adding annual CPI increase to all sanitation rates.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this would, last year, we added the CPI increase to all, to most of the sanitation rates. This would add the CPI effective each year based on what the Consumer Price Index is to all sanitation rates across the board. We left a few out last year and this would just make it across the board. It would only raise it a small amount each year instead of having to go a few years and then go up a major amount.
Can you give us an idea of what small amount?
Sure. It'd be somewhere in the neighborhood of 25 cents a month on a senior rate.
It's somewhere in that neighborhood. I didn't saw it exactly in CPI this year, but...
Instead of making an automatic increase, why don't we talk about this every year? Why don't we look at it and talk about it every year instead of just adding something in place that's going to give a steady increase in the amount? Because we don't know what the Consumer Price Index is going to do. It could be, it could be 0.4% or it could be nine and a half percent, you know? And in the eighties, I think it was a few times over 10%, you know? So, if you just go by CPI, I would say that it would be smarter on our part or more conservative to say we look at it every year.
When do we normally get the CPI rate increases in every year? Do we not?
Well, we, we get the CPI for the budget each year in June, so that we have a number to base it on that's early enough to start planning.
Now, this is the International Base Consumer Price Index. Is that not right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what we're basing this on, right?
Yes, sir. The Consumer Price Index is a market basket.
Right, right.
It's United States, yes, sir.
Right.
That's the same increase we have gotten every year in the past year alone, this past year.
If we pass this, though, we could go ahead and look at it every year and not have to go up, right?
No, if you pass this, that's what it's saying, that you, it's going to automatically increase based on the Consumer Price Index.
It would automatically increase, similar to what was done with water. It'll automatically increase, but you can go back and vote not to increase it, which y'all did with water last year.
Right, yes.
It was set to automatically increase based on the water rate study, but then y'all voted not to increase it last year. So, you do have that option to go back and vote in any year not to increase it. But this would...
You'll have to change, you'll have to have two parts. One, to change this resolution and another one to vote not to increase it. Is that not correct?
The way that we handled the water was, it's based on that rate study, but the commission always has the opportunity to go back and vote in any year not to increase it.
Would it, would it automatically come up through the commission meeting? I mean, or would we need to bring it up?
We would need to bring it up. If we did it this way, we would need to bring it up to not increase.
We just did, like, just the same, would they yearly review or report the commission?
That's, that's my point. I just think we need to review it every year. It's not an automatic increase.
That way it gives us a chance to look at it?
If we resolved, if we resolved to do it every year based on this, then they, then it could just be done. It's a plus.
Well, we've already resolved to do this every year, just not on...
Not on all rates. Just at all rates, yes.
Mr. Reller, are we losing money in sanitation at the moment based off the CPI?
Yes, sir.
On certain rates.
Yeah, on certain rates.
We're losing money on, explain those rates.
So, the main one is the senior rate. We didn't raise that.
So, it stayed the same. So, we're losing money on that.
782?
782.
If you, what we're looking at with the CPI based in June was 5, was 5.1%. So, if you increased it 5.1%, you're looking at somewhere around, I think it was 40 cents, 40 cents a month.
Yeah. At, what percentage of people do we have that's on that? What senior, how many seniors do we have?
I'd say 30, 30 to 35%.
And what age, age is that?
Over 65, 65 over. What's, what's really hurt us on that, we did get to do a CPI increase last year. But by doing that, it brought a lot of attention to the senior rate. And we probably had another 3,000 customers that went from regular rate to senior rate. It's pretty much flushed a lot of our increase that we got. Does that make sense?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve, N.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Aye. I oppose it. I don't, I don't think we need to look at it.
I'm not, I'm not comfortable with it. I'd like a review yearly.
I would too.
To see if, you know, if we can keep it the same and protect our citizens. That's, that's where I'm at.
Look up that amendment. Did you amend it?
The motion in place was to do it just like it is without the amendment.
Well, we don't, we don't have the amendment. So, is the motion to consider adding annual CPI increase to all sanitation rates, we yearly review brought forward commission?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree. I would agree with that. Yeah, as long as...
That's the motion. And then you seconded that motion to the commission.
I'll second that.
With yearly review brought forward commission.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. O, considering one-time distribution in the amount of 5,000 to restoring women's outreach from the opioid settlement fund.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we were approached by restoring women's outreach and they had also talked with the city and asked if they would give us a certain amount and we would match it. This, they came and met with the chairman and myself. And this was the request that the city said they would match if we would. What's the lady, the seller lady, what's her name?
Nancy.
Yeah, Nancy Mover. This is, I'm sorry, this is a drug rehabilitation outreach and they help women come through, come out of jail, get off drugs, and kind of get jobs and make a life for themselves. It is a nonprofit and it would be a qualifying group to give some opioid funds to, that qualify into opioid funds, so.
This is based out of that settlement, that class action suit. So, it's not coming out of general, but...
That's right, it's not a general fund.
Coming from that lawsuit.
Yes, sir.
How do we have to use it? Is there specifics on that we have to use?
There's a list of items that you can use. It has to be opioid-related, drug rehab. We can use some of it for certain programs, like drug court, that sort of thing. But it has to have a drug rehabilitation aspect to it.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve out of it.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. P, consider quotes from Haley Company LLC for victim service flooring installation in the amount of $46,819.
Mr. Chairman, just to review the whole process here, this is a victim service building. This is the last step of the renovations that we were considering doing for those, for the building. We've already done the roof, we've done the painting, this flooring. So, this should be the last step. We did an RFP for this and got zero interest. So, then we went back out and got two different quotes. And this was about as quoted to.
This is coming out of that money that they got or is this out of our general fund?
I'm not sure how it's happened with this.
This will be out of general fund. It, it was money that they didn't use. Y'all remember, there was money that they didn't use. And instead of just saying, here's, I think it was 150,000, instead of saying, just take the 150,000 for the building, y'all said each project needed to come back to the commission for approval. So, there was that 150 set aside for the, they got a grant and then the commission set some aside for the roof.
The roof.
And the grant paid for the roof. So...
How much roughly did we get in the building after these approvals?
It's going to be less than 150, between 100 and 150, I'd say, yes. I'll get you.
Including this?
This will be a close to that, yes.
So, we're, we're under the 150 that was set aside.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Yes.
In what conditions? I believe in him now, Shane. He's got to be in good shape.
This will finish it up. It's going to be a lot better, yes. We've done a lot of extra plumbing, electrical down the top too, and she's paid for most of that.
We appreciate all the work you've done.
We're not keeping up with the county's kind of spend on that building. Like when Chris feels open and works on it.
I'm not keeping up with mine. I'm not sure if Chris is or not. We, we did have a meeting with her, explained to her that this was going to be one of the last things we do. And from this point forward, she's responsible for most of the maintenance. And we will help her find people to do the work, but she would have to be responsible for the cost of that. Because the lease agreement they signed is stated in there and she fully understood, but that's the way it needs to be. So, she's, she's going to help us with that. We should be on there as much now as we have been in the past.
Make a motion to approve out of E.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. Q, consider quote from Ryan Enterprises for the Board Education Building for Linda Improvements in the amount of $16,200.
Well, the rain we've had this summer has caused a lot of issues with, especially in the basement part with the extension offices. We've actually had water running in the face of the building, down through the windows. After looking at a lot of the windows, the caulking is just a hole that starts to crack and fall off in places. So, we, we went with Ryan Enterprises. They do a lot of the painting for us. And this is a lot cheaper than the price we had just a year or two ago. And he's going to guarantee that the basement building and all the windows and doors will be re-caulked and within those sort of strength caulking.
Make a motion to approve out of E.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. O, consider the purchase of a Tucucci TB 240. I'll state B, a contract number MA2300004123 for a water department in amount of $58,668.66. And authorize the chairman to sign related paperwork.
Motion approved out of M.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. A, consider the purchase of two Azuazu tank kit, 10-yard curb tender manual side loader, all sourced, well bid, bid, contract number 060920-N8F for the sanitation department in the amount of $339,742. Authorize the chairman to sign all related paperwork.
Motion approved out of M. Second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. T, consider Chairman Clemens to nominate Barry Slapp for reemployment to the E911 Board for a four-year term to expire 9/1/27.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve out of T.
Second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. U, consider Commissioner Marchman's nominee, Dwayne Goodwin, for reemployment to the E911 Board for a four-year term to expire 9/1/27.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve out of E.
Second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. Consider Chair, Chairman Clemens to nominate Brittany Heron for appointment to the Cullen County Tourism Bureau.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve out of D.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Yes, sir.
Will King?
Yes, sir.
I thought the legislation stated that the park director had to be the tourism bureau.
I spoke with attorney for the Tourism Bureau, it's Brad Wilson. You know, it's a new statute. It's just come into place. And so, his interpretation of it at this point is that, you know, even if you have a director that is not willing to answer for whatever reason, you've got to have a backup. And so, we're passing this to formalize it. And we'll provide it to the bureau and then move it forward, you know, if or when the department or whatever, that person who's hired would know that that is a part of the job requirements to serve on the Tourism Bureau.
Do we get a motion on that?
I'm looking, please.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. W, consider a request from Newground Fellowship to host a prayer event in the South Parking Lot on Saturday, October 21st from 3:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Motion approved out of that. Second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. X, consider authorization from Cullen County for kids to use the Board Education Parking Lot to host a car show on November 11th, 2023 from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Motion approved out of E. Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. Y, consider authorization for premier volleyball travel team to use the South Parking Lot at the courthouse to host Swamp Johns on November 1st, 2023 from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And on December 1st, 2023, from 3:00 to 6:30 p.m.
Motion approved out of Y. Second that motion.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass. Z, propose plant Serenity Point cabins, Phase 2, Lot 3 through 9, a major subdivision containing seven lots located off of 338.
You got anything on this, John?
This was originally approved as one big subdivision. They came back and divided into A and a B section. We're just re-approving this section one back.
Have we got, have we got anybody checking on the damage they're doing up there to the roadways and stuff?
We do have to look at it, but not a lot of load posted out there.
Well, I'm not really concerned about the load as much as I am about the ditching and the piping. I've had crews out there three different times trying to unbury pipes that they buried and they can't even locate them anymore. And it's causing major flooding damage up there on the hill.
They are supposed to be getting us some pipes to replace those.
Where is that, is that located under the...
Sp, uh, bottom of the bay, bottom of the bay.
Yeah, yeah. But I'm talking about, is that where it's...
Yeah, there's, there's cross drains under the roads that's probably eight foot deep under dirt right now.
I wonder if that, that's not, that wasn't part of the subdivision, though, was it?
So, part of one of them's run off. I can't hear if that's one or another.
There's a, there's a Miss Blackman that lives up there that's called me and, and I've had two crews go out already. And neither one of the crews could locate the pipe because it's a deep under, under the silt runoff in their construction.
Well, we don't have to approve the plant to fix what's going on. You know what I'm saying? That's, that's up to us.
I'm, you know, that, that's the dilemma I'm having to deal with is, you know, all the complaints of the, the damage and runoff, it's not being addressed by the, by the contractors.
Did they do a bond or did they do a, like, no, did they do a bond?
And so, is this just a preliminary plant?
Yeah, this is, well, it's dividing. They got, they had all one plant and now they're divided into two segments, if I understand.
We approved, we approved it all as one preliminary. They came back and changed it to A-section preliminary and now B-section preliminary. I don't have anything in here on, I don't have anything in here on bond or this. This is just a preliminary still.
I think that we could go ahead, if you wanted to, you could go ahead. If they've met their requirements, go ahead and create a preliminary. But then you don't have to, you know, the firm department can shut it down if it's not done the way they want to on the farm.
Well, they're want us to release the bond. See what I'm saying? That's the next...
No, that's a...
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, that's their reserve.
Okay, okay.
That's a section 15.
116, I see now, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's down off 202.
Yeah, yeah.
So, this is just a preliminary, yes.
It says to approve the plant, but they can't, they can't go forward with what they're doing if we don't approve the plant. But if we approve it, they can go ahead and go forward with what they're doing. But I'm trying to figure out how we're going to hold it accountable.
I think you owe them accountable in the next step because then you don't sign off when they want, right? I think that's where you have the, where you can hold their faith. When they want, right. I think that's where you have the, um, where you can hold it, they can fire.
I make a motion to approve out of Z.
Your, your, Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passed. Double A. Proposed bond release for point sixteen subdivision. All construction has been completed and ties final inspection.
Are they gonna, are they gonna work on the road going in two point sixteen? That, is it two oh four?
That road was going to be widened last year. It's going to be.
Well, it's horrible. It's demolished.
They tore it all to pieces. I bet Carl won't sell it for.
Philip was looking at something on that last week. I don't have the details on it.
You know, we had a meeting, was it last year on that, when the folks came up because the road's so narrow and they agreed to widen the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's about all I know.
I'm going to make a motion to deny out of double A.
Do you want to deny or do you want to just hold it and put it on our next?
Table.
Table.
On the table.
Okay.
Second motion.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Denied?
Table.
Table. Double A. Award bid number fourteen thirty-nine to thermal images to WS Darley and Company.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is, these next two items were bids from the ARPA funds for the Volunteer Fire Association. These thermal imaging devices would be for each fire department. And Commissioner Freeman helped kind of get the specs together for that as well as the sector scan sonar for all the fire association to use. These two were the low bidders, so BB WS Darley was the low bidder on these items.
Each fire department's getting one of those?
Each, each department will get two tickets.
Make a motion to approve BB. Second.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? A. CC Award bid number fourteen forty to sector scan sonar to C.A. Richards and Associates Incorporated.
And this is the same funding from the ARPA funds. This will be available for all the fire association to use for each fire department, primarily for late use, body retrieval and that sort of thing.
Chairman, you want to keep that with?
No, this, this actual unit right here will be, while it's being purchased through the association, will be controlled by Crane Hill and Tremble Departments. It'll stay in-house there because they're the only two departments equipped and set up to run this system.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve out of C. Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passed. I think this will be good for the fire departments.
This, this equipment right here completes everything that Coleman County did not have that we'd have to call in other resources for.
DD Award bid number fourteen forty-two to spot repair to county roads to car sale and G Construction LLC.
Can we clarify spot repair?
The spot repair was going to be identified as areas with large white horse plaque upon its under. And then go in there and dig them out and fill them with either stone or, or black basements area.
According to the engineer, I think two twenty-three is going to be one of the first roads that will start working on, on that.
Yes, it was.
I make a motion to approve out of DD.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passed. E. Award bid number fourteen forty-three for jail supplies and chemicals to North Alabama Chemical. Central paper for the laundry, laundry and kitchen chemicals and the area control solution for the fogging machine chemicals.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, um, any?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passed. L. F. L. Award bid number fourteen forty-four service of the Sheriff's Office and other various county vehicles to Bearco Incorporated DBA High Lane Express Loop.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve out of L. Second that motion.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passed. G. G. Award bid number fourteen forty-five pest control to Cook's Pest Control.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve out of G. G.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Passed. H. H. Request from Attorney for Executive Session under Section Seven of Act Number 202005-40. At this time, we have a request that a motion be considered for executive session based on the recommendation of our county attorney regarding pending our written legal matters.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve this request. AJ. Anyone do you think should second that? I'll second.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I drafted a letter advising of the executive session and that it's necessary and proper to protect confidential information. The code section that's applicable is Alabama Code thirty-six dash twenty-five A seven A three. I'm licensed to practice in Alabama. And we will use this time to discuss the new written litigation. Think we will take approximately twenty minutes and be able to reconvene back in here at that time.
At this time, we have heard information from our county attorney or from our county attorney. We will not take any actions at this time and no formal actions was taken during the executive session.
That's our next work session will be.
Next commission work session. Forward, the next commission work session will be Tuesday, September the 19th, 2023 at 4:00 p.m. In the commission meeting room, five, the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, September the 19th, 2023. Five, the next commission meeting will be Tuesday, September 19th, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. The commission meeting room. Six, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So, look, second...